Black County Board of Supervisors meeting to order for December 12, 2017. Mr. Veder, roll call please.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Maxman.
Here. Take a moment of silence to reflect on actions. Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the agenda received, proposed or as amended. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Today, it's our pleasure to recognize the Janesville Girls Volleyball State Champions. We could have the coach come up to the microphone and give us a little overview of your season. It's my understanding that this is your third championship in a row.
It is. I've got a great group of young ladies here, and they work hard year after year. And this is our third straight championship and fourth in the last five years. So, a lot of work goes into that, and it has paid off. And these girls also are involved in a lot of other things. A lot of them play basketball. They have a game tonight again. But yeah, we're very proud and we're honored that you have invited us here and appreciate this.
Okay, well, we'd like to hear from the players, so if you could have them come up front. We'll want to have a photo, too.
All right, up front there.
Right in front of the podium where you're standing.
So, let them come up and introduce themselves.
Yes.
whichever order you want to go.
Somebody's got to be first.
Let them introduce themselves.
Yeah.
Yes.
I'm Julia Meister.
Why don't you give your grade, too?
I'm a sophomore.
All right. Just have a...
I'm Ellie Smith. I'm a senior.
I'm Bree Thompson. I'm a junior.
I'm Kennedy Meister. I'm a senior.
I'm Lily Nielsen. I'm a junior.
I'm Bailey Hoff. I'm a sophomore.
I'm Lily Lickway. I'm a junior.
I'm Kennedy Ricken. I'm also a junior.
I'm Alisa Bangen. I'm a junior.
I'm Madison Stanhope. And I'm a senior.
I'm Grace Homingyon. I'm a junior.
I'm Gabby Gergen. I'm a freshman.
I'm Jane Numtham. And I'm a junior.
Well, that's outstanding work, and I'm sure there's a lot of dedication that goes into this, that you're able to continue to repeat at the high level of competition. Three championships, that's outstanding. Four and five years, that's amazing. And it looks like you have a good run for next year with the amount of juniors and underclassmen that you have. So, I'd ask, would you like to present this plaque to the school? Whoever likes to set... Thank you very much. We appreciate that. And then we're going to ask that... He's going to take a picture, so he's going to direct you how you want.
You can come over.
Yeah, the coaches want to come up.
The coaches?
As well.
Yes.
We got people.
We can't take the picture without you.
My third assistant, or my second assistant couldn't be here, so we'll just have the team here, too.
That's pretty good smiles.
They practiced.
Thank you.
Did you get your picture?
Ladies, you know you've got to turn this way, too, for them.
They know how to pose. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. A lot of great teams in this area, so volleyball is really...
Absolutely. You're the third girls' state champions that have been here to be recognized.
Yes, thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Back to school. Got a little powerhouse up there.
Our next item, public comments, if anyone from the public wishes to make... Any... Thank you. Any comments to the board? Seeing none, we move on to claims and payments. A is a resolution that approved the expenditures for Blackhawk County.
Expenses for the county this week amount to $277,544.57. Two seven seven five four four point five seven. Susan said that everything was in order. Susan's unable to be here today.
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and second. Any discussion? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item B is the board to approve the expenditures for Country View Facility.
Country View amount is an actual total of $377,081.23. However, they need to hold off paying the November benefits, and that amount is $311,520.97 due to lack of funds. So, the actual amount that's being paid is $65,560.26. Six five five six oh point two six.
Move to approve?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on resolution? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item five is received project updates from department heads, elected officials. Morning, Kathy.
Good morning, Board. Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. The roads are in good condition this morning. We are working on our resurfacing plans, getting those submitted to the Iowa DOT, and I have submitted those cover sheets for you all to sign today or tomorrow would be great so that we can get those turned into the Iowa DOT for their letting in March. My staff and I did spend a few days in Ames last week at the Iowa County Engineers Association, our annual meeting. We did hear some good sessions for managers on collective bargaining. Ryan did give a nice presentation on activities that our bridge crew participates in, such as building the slabs and then taking the slabs out to our construction site, to the bridge replacement site. Nice job on that. Other good sessions were safety, being in compliance with safety and OSHA regulations. We've been working with Deb Bunger on increasing our safety training for our employees in particular. Next week, I do plan on showing you some of our construction projects that we did complete for the year, so the 2017 construction season. I'm going to show you a few slides for those photos, what we completed this year. Can I answer any questions at this time? Thank you.
Look, I... Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Item six is approval of the...
So moved.
Second.
Minutes of December 5. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item seven is the consent agenda. This is by a single resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on any item? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item eight, contracts and agreements. A is a resolution at the lowest reasonable bid received for carpet line USA Waterloo, Iowa for carpet replacement at North Wing of Pinecrest Facility with the bid of $8,599. Be approved as recommended by Roy Gavin, Maintenance Superintendent.
So moved.
Second.
Morning.
Good morning, Board. Roy Gavin, Maintenance Superintendent. Just to share with the Board, this is the wing that heads directly back towards the VA Department. So, it'd be that hallway, and then along with, I believe, there's five offices that will be addressed at that time as well. So, it's approximately 2,000 square feet of carpet. And they're looking at getting this completed by the end of January.
Where are you at with the floor in here?
We've done three attempts on this floor. We've got one more thing we want to try. If that does not work, I'll probably be bringing it in front of the Board to replace the carpet.
Any other questions on resolution? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item nine, under other business, A is a resolution at the bridge embargo establishing vehicles and load limits for structures number 76860 crossing Beaver Creek located on Butler Road between Beaver Valley Road and Westbrook Road. With a load limit of seven ton be approved and signage be erected advising of the permissible maximum weights as recommended by Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
Morning, Board. Ryan Brennan, the Assistant Engineer. This just came up as part of our yearly bridge inspections. We'll be posting this structure for seven tons, as you noted. This is something we do plan on repairing this spring. We will be able to drive some additional piling and some new beams to re-support some of the deteriorating timber that's in there. That will remove the posting in the spring after we complete that repair.
Let's see, age on this?
I don't know the exact age. It was probably built in the 60s or 70s. It's not terribly old. Overall, other than the substructure, it's in very good condition.
Thank you. This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Resolution approved. Item B is a resolution that the settlement of complaint and final acceptance of work for Project BROS-C007, Hammond Avenue Bridge Replacement on Hammond Avenue from D-35 Shrock Road, south an eighth of a mile to the west limits of 35. This was final payment in the amount of $9,570.26. Total cost was $319,008.80. Kathy, you have any comments on this?
Sure. This project was completed on time, or, you know, there were no liquidated damages assessed to K Construction. It was about 1% under, excuse me, over the contract amount with K Construction. It did result in a very nice bridge on Hammond Avenue, which is directly south of Waterloo. This is a gravel road bridge. So, I'd recommend that you approve this and that we can go ahead and pay the contractor the last remaining portion, as well as the retainage can also be released then.
Any questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item C is a resolution at the statement of completion and final acceptance of work for Project BR0SC007, Bridge Replacement on C-66. This is West Dunkerton Road, west an quarter mile on the north lane of S-33-T90-R13 be approved and direct chair to sign for same. The Iowa Department of Transportation make final payment in the amount of $13,160.91 with a total cost project of $438,696 as recommended by Kathy Nicholas, county engineer.
So moved.
Second.
So, similar to the last resolution, this also releases the final payment, as well as the retainage to Taylor Construction. This is the bridge that was on Dunkerton, that is on Dunkerton Road, west of the county home. Larger, a much nicer structure than what was existing before. It was completed on time, and this one was about 1% under the contract amount. So, I'd recommend approval.
Any other questions? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item D is a motion to suspend item 1A of the board appointments to statutory bodies that the state's medical applicants for the Board of Health must be a county resident in order to permit non-county residents' medical application to serve. I think I got that right.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Is there any discussion on this?
Pete, this is just a one-time deal, what we're doing?
Yes. It's a unique situation, and you're doing something that's contrary to the policy, so you're explaining that by this motion.
And we did seek counsel on this before interviewing the individual and asking for that, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
This is a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item E is a motion to appoint Dr. Rose M.D. as the representative of the Blackhawk County Board of Health, be approved effective January 1, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
I don't see Dr. Rose here today, but he is... Just to give a little information to the public, he is a family physician that practiced in Waterloo since 2008. He's practiced at both Allen and Covenant, in both the clinic and hospital settings, and has been interested in population health concerns, and so we feel he was an excellent candidate for the Health Board.
Now, this is a motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. Item F is a motion that the appointment of Bonnie Sadler as a representative for the Blackhawk County Board of Health be approved effective January 1, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item G, that the suspension requested by Rebecca Corin on taxes owed for 2017-18 installments in the amount of $1,390 for parcel 8913-28403-035 be approved. As opposed to 427.8 of the Iowa Code, and the county treasurer be authorized to adjust her records accordingly. Any discussion on this? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item E is a resolution that suspension request by Beverly Beaumont on taxes owed for 2017-2018 installments in the amount of $928 on parcel 891313-151-012 be approved pursuant to 427.8 of the Code of Iowa, and the county auditor be authorized to adjust her records accordingly.
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Resolution that taxes on submitted properties be abated under 445.16 of the Code of Iowa as Blackhawk County Treasurer has determined that it is impractible due collection of total amounts due through the tax sale on personal judgment, and this is in the amount of $230. Any discussion on this? This is a resolution. Please answer as your name.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. Item J is a motion that the travel request submitted by Susan Deaton, financial director, be approved and direct chair to sign for same for $1,250 to attend the GFoa Conference in St. Louis, Missouri, scheduled for May 5 through the 9, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
This is a motion. Any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Item K is discussion possible board action that the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors commit to funding public safety consulting services fees for the Blackhawk County SEJIS Board with the understanding that SEJIS will repay the fees if the project does not move forward in the amount of $340,314 from the remaining 2,015 AGO bonds proceeds for public safety radio system. We had this on the agenda last week, and the board members wanted some clarification. This was brought back by Supervisor Schwartz, so I guess we can proceed with this. First off, does the board members have any questions that they would like to have addressed?
Did we get the amount that's still in the funds for 9/11 or 9/11?
Signance, I think.
Suzie, on the balance of 9/11 and SEJIS.
Judy or Chief Folsen, you have that information? I guess the fund balance in SEJIS and E911?
Well, we looked at FY17, FY18, and FY19. Obviously, that's a forecast for 18th and 19th, and we worked with Susan Deaton on that as well. So, in FY17, the remaining balance in the year was $77,000. We predicted to be $80,000 in FY18. Then FY19, we expected to be $330,000. Now, the big increase in FY19 is a result of a bond being paid, the spring of this year, as well as we moved to the new radio system, which decreases our expenses on an annual basis to maintain the countywide radio system for all police, fire, and EMS. So, we think we can easily pay back that $340,000 should it become necessary. And we met last Wednesday our monthly board meetings, and it was approved by the SEJIS and the 9/11 Board to pay those funds back, the $340,000 back, should it become necessary. So, we believe we have the funding, and of course, we have the Board's approval for that.
And the fund balance in SEJIS?
That I don't have. I guess I... That one is not... It's based on what the agency's put in, based on what they're going to expend, and so there's not a big balance in that. The portion of this that will be paid would fall under the 9/11 Board. That's who has the funding for it.
So, you're going to use the funding, the $330,000, to pay for this project each year?
Right. Whatever's carried over, what we're planning to do is decide any overtures that we have as far as the fund balance, so that when it comes time to move forward, this is a software project, the 9/11 Board would come to the Board of Supervisors and ask to bond for that, similar to what we did with the previous radio system, and then would make payments on that. Is that correct?
Yeah.
It'd be my understanding that in the event that we needed to have a bond, is that those proceeds, had it been paying off, the current bond would be used to help pay that bond off in the future. Not sure that that would be adequate funding for that, but it could be part of the funding for the two to $3 million project.
That is correct, yes.
Was there any discussion on SEJIS funds being utilized, I guess, to pay for the consultant? Since the county would be the ones you'd be coming to later for the bonding, but...
I guess the point in that is that we're using contingency money to pay for the consultant. It's my understanding that we're also need to buy some equipment to have on hand. So, our contingency fund is really close as to having those funds to do these two projects. And I guess some question may be, is there any funds in SEJIS that could help reduce using the contingency funds to pay for this?
Yeah, there really isn't in the SEJIS fund, because the SEJIS fund operates a little differently than the others. Each agency, the SEJIS budget is quite small for just operating the SEJIS actual expenses, but some of the departments will choose to use SEJIS as a way to pay for, say, computers in the cars or equipment, certain other equipment. So, it's a rather small budget, and there's any excess really remains with each agency, kind of in a carryover annually for that agency to use for what small SEJIS operational costs are, but as well as other costs that they choose to pay through SEJIS. So, we're relying upon the 9/11 funds to pay for that, and that's the fund that is significant compared to...
I guess I just have some concerns that our contingency funds, you know, may or may not be adequate to cover the cost once we use these $340,000.
Well, if it isn't, we certainly do have some dollars in the 9/11 account that could help pay for that. You know, our estimated carryover would be $80,000 for this current fiscal year.
Did the contract, was it submitted? Was it signed and submitted? Not yet. So, you've asked for an extension for that type of...
Did Cedar Falls ever look at stepping up to the plate and taking this on as a project? Seeing as you guys are, Waterloo and Cedar Falls are the biggest users?
You mean just to fund the, not just the RFP, but the whole project?
Right.
Well, it... We just feel it should be equitably shared between all the users, and all the users are all the cities, you know, the county, even some of the EMS like Covenant and Sartorius. They even, paramedics even pay a portion of this. So, to more equitably share it between everybody in the county who all uses the services, like we just feel this is the best way to budget for it. I mean, I suppose there always is the option to go to each individual agency in the county, but then we would have to get approval from probably 10 different, you know, boards or councils.
There's also some question, I think we had last week, on the $340,000 being a rather large amount for such a small... Well, I think we're anticipating a $3 million project, and I think it was about $267,000, $250,000, something like that, for our consultant for the radio project? We went out for bids, and that was the best price, and... We went out for bids and that was the best price and I think we got four bids back.
Yeah.
Yeah, we actually did an RFP process for this.
In interview three, I think, that was, I think what it said. But there was no explanation, I guess, for why this, it just seems like a rather large contract for a consultant when we didn't have an identified timeline, you know, we thought it might be a year. So I just wondered if there was any questions asked or for those that were on that committee that, why the high cost?
Uh, yeah, I don't really remember any great details as to what the questions was to the consultants in regards to their fees versus what they would do for the, as part of the project. But, you know, we did go, we did follow the, we did do an RFP process and that was, this was the company that...
The consultant in this case is going to not only be there for the process of breaking down who the company's gonna be or what software, they're gonna stick with it all the way through to the end until it's actually operational.
That's true.
If the process takes a year and a half, the consultant will be there for a year and a half.
Like the radio system.
Where one or two of the others, their job ended when they picked the software company and they were done.
Are there any other entities in Iowa that have used this consultant? Do you know?
I would have to go back and look, I want to say there was, they were familiar with or they had worked with another county. I don't recall which county it was, I want to say Scott County, but I would have to go back and look.
They have done work of this nature, this isn't, isn't their first project, they're very familiar with this, these type of projects.
Plus, they were the consultant of the largest staff.
So you're saying if it takes twelve months, they get three-hundred-and-forty thousand? Or if it takes eighteen months, they'll still get three-hundred-and...
Well, the process is probably gonna take up to a year just to get who they're gonna go with for software. They're gonna go beyond that point where the others, that was it for them. So potentially it could be two years. All depends on how long it takes to get the software, get it set up and so forth.
I think one of the issues for me last week was really just the fact that the county could use that funding to pay down their debt. So, and we also needed some inventory, obviously, for the radio system. I think that was supposed to be some of that seven-hundred-thousand dollars. But, and also, we talked about the fact that we were kind of surprised, some of us, by the whole project. But, yeah, that we didn't look for options or other options other than the bonding, I think, was always my concern. That we just looked at those dollars that were there and appeared to be, I think, sitting there or some, or as viewed as sitting there when we can use that, like I say, for other purposes as well, for radio or for public safety. Not that you don't feel, I know this is a good use of those funds. I would say to just, even in the statement where we say we're just, if the project does not move forward, they, they pay us back. I'm not, I'm not sure we shouldn't just ask for payment of that if there are funds available. When we talked last week, it was a little bit about a loan, as far as if we were to give you a loan and then have repayment since your bonds are gonna be paid off, as you said, in February or March.
I guess, you know, some of the funding necessary to pay off the software costs are gonna be, I guess, looked at, where that possible multi-funding can come from because that approximately thirty thousand a month will not be adequate to pay off the bond that has to be issued to cover the cost. It might be, I don't know, ideally it'd be a five-year or it could be a ten-year bond, but they're gonna have to look for additional funding besides that thirty thousand dollars per month.
I just know the county becomes the easy one to look at for the bonding project in general. So like I say, for the consultant to go forward when there are funds available in other sources was just a possibility.
The issue is not so much that the bonding's the mechanism, or the county's the mechanism for the bonding, it's that we don't have to pay it off with county taxes. Any other questions, comments, anyone considering board action?
Was there a time limit? I guess one more question on that, when the project doesn't move forward, when those funds have to be repaid? It's, so the project itself has to move forward in a certain timeline?
Well, we, we would, yeah, we don't have a hard, fast date, but we certainly like this company to get us something within twelve months and then, I believe is the time period. And then, you know, at that point, we would determine whether or not we can move to the next step. But quite frankly, we're in a situation here where we are gonna have to make some changes. We have to make some changes.
But I can't, still can't understand why we waited so long to come to this point when we knew that supposedly that we're having all these problems.
Well, we worked with the company to try to fix these problems. We've been working with them for several years and that's ultimately what we're hoping for, is some fixes. But we're not getting fixes, we're still having some real serious problems. And we need that calls that are dropping, like, due to, due to the programming dropping and not getting dispatched. That's a very, very serious concern, as well as some other concerns. But, you know, we've been working with them for years, we've been aware for years, you know, maybe we should have voiced that concern outside of our, our own entities, but, but we were hoping to get a fix and it's clear that...
So how are we alleviating these problems now that you talked about last week that, like, we're, we're, where it goes from station to station, I guess, where, and it's, there's a delay sometimes of twenty minutes. That definitely concerns me, why that hasn't been addressed. That would have been a red flag right away. I'd have brought that company and made them hold their feet to the fire and get it corrected.
Well, we have, we have...
That's people's lives.
You're absolutely correct and part of the problem is it can't be duplicated, it happens. What we're doing on our end is when a call is put in, the call taker says to the law dispatcher or to the ambulance dispatcher, you've got a call, I just put a call in. And they're more hyper vigilant of watching those things.
We have held that company's feet to the fire, but they haven't performed, that's where we're at today. They're just, we have no faith that this is gonna get fixed with our current company. And we've worked for them, at least for two years, on this problem and we're just to a point where we can't stand by and rely upon them, particularly when they can't, they can't even say to us, oh, we can fix it. You know, we get this, can't duplicate the problem, we don't, you know, we're, we're just not getting the answers we need. It's to a point where we're...
I think it's to the point where the software can't keep up with the changes. Obviously, things change over there all the time and the software just isn't capable of keeping up or change. It's outdated and...
But did they, did they add some stuff, my question to Tom, or maybe to these people, that they added stuff that didn't need to be added to it? You know, to more or less compound the situation, you were talking about records and stuff on there. Couldn't records be kept on a different file rather than into this situation?
Well, part of, part of the needs to keep the records on that is you want, you want call history. For example, if you're going to one-twenty-three Main Street, it'll, it'll flash history if you've been there before. And sometimes the history is significant, known to be armed, has assaulted officers, that type of thing. Or it could be medical, medical history, we, we need those, we need those interwoven because we need to know that history, you know, that callback history for some of those. So, you know, I, we don't take this lightly because we know this is a big project, this is a big expense, but we've been working on this for a while and we're just not, it, it's, hasn't been fixed, it's been two years and we just don't have any faith in the company and they have not said we can fix it. But that is a pretty significant statement for them to not be able to make.
I think it, I think it's come clear to me that the current system's failing us and we've got a, a public safety, you know, safety concerns that are resulting as a so. I've, and now that we've taken care of the issue that Blackhawk County is not gonna be on, on the hook, if this project doesn't go forward, we won't have to come up with those funds elsewhere since we couldn't use the bonds if we didn't do the project. I'd like to make, make a motion that Blackhawk County commits to fund the public safety consulting fees for the Blackhawk County CEGIS Board with the understanding that CEGIS will repay the fees if the project does not move forward in the amount of three-hundred-and-forty-thousand-three-hundred-and-fourteen dollars. And this is out of the two thousand and fifteen GO bonds for the public safety radio system.
Second.
We have a motion in the seconds, or any other discussion?
No, I do think it's unfortunate, though, that we requested the financials and never received them.
It's true.
Well, you had the balance for the nine, E-nine-one-one, didn't you?
I've got the projections and the balances for the next, for last year's actuals, what we estimate for FY-eighteen and what we are projecting FY-nineteen, although this has not been approved or filed with the state.
Would you want Linda, balance for CEGIS?
No, it's, yeah, that's fine, I just thought we'd ask for both.
CEGIS to date this fiscal year is a hundred and seventeen thousand.
I mean, I can give you for nine-one-one.
Yeah, we can provide you with what we have.
No, that's all right, we had to ask, I guess I thought we'd probably get it before today's meeting and we didn't, but I did expect to get it today.
Yeah, we do have those here, we can share those with you, but we did work with Susan on, on these.
Any other discussion?
No, I, yeah, I was just gonna say, public safety, as we all know, I think, is probably nothing more important in our county than public safety. I think this, this process and where, that we're even going through it like we are now and being difficult, I'm sure you think, to work with, but that's not the intent, I guess, for our residents. But I just think maybe this is a learning experience for all of us to do this, communicate a little differently and better.
Yeah, if it wasn't for this being a public safety issue, I'd probably be both no on it. But, but what the way it stands, my goal would probably change because of it.
It's kind of similar to the jail security over there. Twenty-five-year-old system just doesn't make it anymore and that's why they had to go with a new program over there.
But they've been working on it for a year and this is like the first we heard of it, so...
Yeah. They've been trying to work the, the problems out, but it's just got to a point where they can't work them out anymore because the company flat out isn't capable, I don't think.
No, but they were able to come to us for the funding.
Chances are, they probably won't even bid on the project because I don't think they got the technology that's needed in this day and age.
No, I'd agree, I agree that you did it in good faith too, what you did, the work you did, I just...
The big key is coming up with the dollars for the project itself, which, who knows what that number's gonna be, two billion, three million.
Any other discussion? This, be a resolution, please answer, your name is called.
Swartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes.
Thank you.
The resolution is approved, thank you. Item L is a motion that the personnel request for labor operator one B position in secondary roads department effective December twelfth, two thousand and seventeen be approved as recommended by...
This is a replacement.
Yes, a full-time replacement due to resignation a few weeks ago. And I do anticipate there will be more movement due to this position being held.
Any other questions? This is a motion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. We do have to canvass for city runoffs. We have our senators and representatives here for our forum, this will probably not take too long, so hope that you'll be patient with us before we get to the forum, thank you. So item A is, is the canvas and this is for the city runoff election held on December fifth for the city of Cedar Falls in accordance with Code of Iowa, fifty-point-two-four. That's Ward two, precinct three.
Okay, look for green, two-six-one.
That's correct.
One-six-nine-zero.
Yes.
Two-eight-seven-seven-three-one.
Three-one.
Two-forty-eight, forty-one.
Green, one-eighty-eight.
Correct.
Eighty-zero.
Correct.
Eighteen-twelve.
This is Ward three, precinct two.
Yep. Green, two-fifty-seven, one-twenty-zero.
Correct.
Three-three. Green, fifty-seven, eighteen, zero.
Correct.
Four-one.
Ward one-four, precinct one.
Green, two-six-two, seventy-two, two.
That's correct. That's the last one. Roy, are you still there? Could, could you set those tables up?
I don't think that's in his job description. Don't hurt yourself. Chair? All those ballots.
Yes.
I want to announce that there were six ballots that were rejected and not counted, extra provisional ballots.
Approval of the resolution.
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Roll call.
That was given, roll call.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Swartz.
Yes.
Maxman.
Yes. The resolution's approved. We'll be moving into board actions.
Just put them side to side there, Rory, out there, that's good. Get chairs behind them, Rory.
Yeah. No, I was hoping to have them at the table. And if you could put their names, tents on their form.
No, I just mean legislators, but I'm not, there might be some speakers.
Oh, sure, the speakers can...
Gary and... They don't have to sit by, by us.
Public comments are over.
Does anybody need to take a recess before we... We'll take a short recess. For the, for the public, I want to talk about priorities that we have. Blackhawk County is part of an urban county coalition that's made up of Dubuque County, Scott County, Johnson County, Lynn County, and Blackhawk County. And we work with the other four urban counties to prioritize, prioritize our legislative priorities throughout the year and we establish those. And I want to thank our representatives and Senator for being here today to go over these and to get your feedback on the priorities that we've set out. So I would ask that you each introduce yourself and give us a little background on the committees that you serve at state level.
Thank you, Chief Chairman. Senator Bill Doddsler, I represent eastern half of Waterloo, Evansdale.
Evansdale, Raymond, Elkhorn Heights, Washburn, and Gilbertville. So I do have some rural communities. Um, I'm the Assistant Democratic Leader, and, uh, my work in the legislature is really focused around economic development. I am the ranking member of the Economic Development Budget Sub, which oversees the budget for Iowa workforce development, the Economic Development Authority, and cultural affairs. I was on the Business, uh, and, uh, and Labor Committee, and, uh, well, I still am on the Business Labor Committee, and I was on the Economic Growth Committee, but that was removed from the Iowa Senate. We do not have that. The Iowa House does. I sit on Ways and Means, Full Appropriations also. And, um, and I really have been working on, on, um, economic development from the point of workforce development and the extreme shortages we have across our business communities in finding qualified and skilled workers.
Thank you.
I'm State Representative Sandy Salmon, and I represent the northern and eastern, um, townships in Blackhawk County, and then I also represent all of Brea County. And I've served on, uh, I've served on the Education Committee, Human Resources Committee, Public Safety, and, uh, Veterans Affairs.
Thank you.
Rob Cressig, State Rep., House District Fifty-nine in Cedar Falls. Uh, I serve on Commerce, uh, Local Government, Public Safety. I heard a little conversation earlier about E nine one, so I'm sure that's a, that's a critical piece of, uh, our state, having people having access to that. Environmental Protection, and I'm on the Economic Development Budget with, uh, Senator Doddsler.
Walt Rogers, South District Sixty, which is southwest corner of Blackhawk, uh, west corner of this, South Cedar Falls, Hudson. I am the Chair of the House Education Committee. I'm on the Corporations, I'm on Cultural Protection and, uh, Education Budget. Most of my work, almost all of my work right now is education policy.
The board would like to thank you for taking the time to be here today. Each session is unique, and we have issues that, uh, at the county government level that we think are critical to our citizens that pay the property taxes at this level. But also want to recognize that Gary Grant is here. He's a lobbyist for the five counties, and he may have some comments through this process also. I have sent out our, um, our priorities, and hopefully, if you need it, I have an extra copy here, but if anybody else would, would like one. Okay. Senator, did you get one?
Anybody else need a copy?
We do.
We need her back.
You can just save paper and use this device here. Which we encourage the state to do, to go paperless, go paperless, you know, so. Very good. Um, while he's making those copies, I guess, uh, one of our issues is, um, the commercial property tax backfill, and, uh, you know, this is a significant, uh, issue with, uh, Blackhawk County. We have, if the state did not live up to their commitments on this, and that's certainly what we expect because that's how the bill was presented, and I think it was done in a bipartisan way, is that, uh, it would, it would be at least a million dollars that, uh, we would, as county government, uh, would lose if that tax credit wasn't committed to by the state of Iowa. What this does is reduce the, um, property tax level, uh, from a hundred percent to ninety percent for, um, industry and commercial properties. So, you know, the, the hope was that, um, this would spur economic growth. We, um, certainly have not seen it to the extent that it would, uh, cover all of the, um, reductions in property taxes from commercial and, uh, industrial properties in Blackhawk County. I guess, uh, given opportunity, start out with, uh, Senator Doddsler for this one here and to go around the room and to get your position on, um, filling, commitment to fill that backfill on these, uh, commercial and industrial property taxes.
Uh, thank you. Um, I, um, was actually on the committee that worked on this legislation, and, uh, one of the comments was from, um, from both sides that this was gonna be etched in stone, but unfortunately, uh, one legislature cannot hold another legislature completely accountable, so, uh, for their prior actions, unless it ends up, uh, basically in the Constitution. So one legislature does have the right to, to change. With that said, I think that that would be a major mistake. Um, I'm adamantly opposed to, uh, a reduction in the backfill. That was part of the deal that caused this thing to pass. If we did not have, uh, legislators saying that the state would take responsibility for a major part, counties across the state did, did have part of the action and did have their revenues reduced, without backfill for certain parts of it, like, uh, uh, some of the residential, the way that was, was calculated, where there were businesses in the same building. I understand completely how tight budgets are across the state, and we heard part of the discussion this morning right here, uh, by your concerns of costs and dealing with public safety. I truly believe that, uh, further reductions are gonna end up, uh, causing property taxes to go up across, uh, the state of Iowa, not only here in Blackhawk County. You have a responsibility to the public safety of our citizens of Blackhawk County, and, uh, those resources that you lost, uh, would possibly lose, would be, uh, greatly, uh, felt across the county. Uh, on the Senate side, we are hearing from Majority Leader, Senator Dick, and others, that they are looking, looking at, and that is of deep concern, and, uh, I will continue to express my resistance and would vote against, uh, a, a further reduction at this time.
Thank you. Representative Solomon?
Thank you, Chair, for merely commenting on this. We are looking at everything. Everything's on the table. I know in conversations just a few days ago with the Corporations Chair, Representative Pat Grassley, he has said everything has to be on the table. The budget is, um, gonna be very tight, and revenue estimating conference came out yesterday and, and said that, um, the, the estimate for fiscal year nineteen is lower. And so we definitely have that to grapple with, as you have your budget to grapple with. So, um, that's where things sit as of now, that I know that everything's on the table, and, you know, I would be lying if I didn't say this wasn't on the table. This would be looked at, too. And so what you were saying, um, that, that, that full amount of backfill amounts to for Blackhawk County, one million dollars for your budget.
Brock Smalley?
Yeah.
Thank you. Representative Cressig?
Thank you for having us here today, and, uh, I think that, I know that the one million dollar impact is real for you, and, uh, just, just one of the areas that I know that you are struggling with is with the county home that you, uh, provide services for. If any of the legislators haven't had a chance to tour that facility, I would ask them to do it because most of those people that are in that facility are in a need of critical care. And, uh, I know you guys are faced with a really difficult decision on how you're gonna be able to continue that program. And so now, guess what we're hearing now, that the property back, property tax backfill is not gonna be followed through, even though Senator Doddsler said it was a promise that was made, uh, in, in the language. And so you had shared a million dollars. Now, I'm hearing that the cities are also gonna be struggling with this issue, and, uh, I'm not completely sure on this number, and somebody may be able to correct me, but my understanding, Waterloo could see as much as two million dollars.
That's correct.
Cedar Falls, six hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, uh, you, you're, and I know, here's the other one, I hope you haven't talked about it, is the amount of state offices that exist within Blackhawk County that you don't get any assistance from the state. Uh, I think that that's probably one of the areas that really needs to come forward. You know, so in reality, you folks are paying for state agencies to be housed here. So I, you know, the original process was to grow the economy. Well, it hasn't done a thing. And, uh, and then the other piece I just would add to is the, the budget is a, a complete mess. You know, I think there was around eight hundred million dollars not that long ago that could have been used, and now we're, we're actually, when we go into session this year, we're gonna have to go back in and fill the buckets that were used to pay for the shortfall at the, at the state level. So, uh, my sense is that, you know, if you look at the state budget, we need to go back in and look at it, look at some priorities, and I see that this as being one of our priorities, that, uh, you know, it's not like you, you've got a tree out back that's growing money, and you just go out and pick it off, and that's how you run the, you know, that's not the case. So I think, uh, you, you have a good sense to the needs in Blackhawk County, and, uh, hopefully we can make sure those are expressed, and thank you.
All right, thank you. Senator, Representative Rogers? Well, I, you know, I can have slip of tongue a lot up here, so.
Yeah, me too. Um, first of all, thank you for putting this together, and we do want to hear your concerns, it's part of the whole budget process, and, uh, let's take a step back and look at the big picture. You know, it's tight everywhere. It's tight across the whole country, you know, we're in tight budgets, revenue estimates up, up everywhere you look. And really, if you go back even bigger picture than that, the thing that's been stressing budgets, first and foremost, really is Medicaid, as we've looked at, um, even President Obama, even before him, President Bush, what they did to expand Medicaid across the board, right or wrong, has really stressed budgets across the country and almost everywhere. And so, uh, when we look at what we gotta do when we come back in, first thing, uh, is obviously the budget. Representative Salmon was right, we've got a modest growth, four percent growth in this next year. Right off the top, that's about two hundred and twenty million dollars. Right off the top, we've gotta come in, come in with almost a hundred million dollars in Medicaid funding we have to do right off of that top line, just because of the federal regulations that we have to endure. And so, um, I look back over the past, you know, ten years and looked at what areas of our budget have actually increased percentage-wise. The two areas are Medicaid and mental health. Both areas that are stressed on every level of government. And, uh, so that's the reality of what we're looking at. Everywhere we go and every budget we look at, from local level all the way up to state, is stressed in those areas. So that's, that's what we're dealing with. So we, we recognize that, um, you know, Representative Cressig said money just doesn't grow on trees, and we just don't have it. If we granted every single request, we couldn't do the state budget either. So we have to look at priorities, and, uh, and that's, that's what we're gonna be doing this next coming year. Did the property tax bill spur any economic growth? You know, it's hard to say for sure. Did it, did it just sustain what we were doing? Was that a positive? And, you know, nobody in here is a perfect economist that we can actually figure out exactly what happened, so I would say maybe it did help. Yes, the property tax backfill is something that is on the table. Was it etched in stone? That is a, that's a phrase that Representative Ossler, Senator Ossler used. When we passed it, it was something that we said we would, we would backfill. Was it gonna be etched in stone forever? I don't know, I think I ever perceived that it, that it would be etched in stone forever. So it's something that we have to look at so that we can sustain our, we can sustain our budget at the same time. I will tell you what I told both Mayor Hart and Mayor Brown, is if that's on the table, I personally will be advocating to, to do nothing this year, and if it happens, it will be an incremental phase in, over a period of time. That's what I'll be advocating for if we're going to actually go into that. I think that's only fair for cities to at least have an idea of what's gonna be down the road. It's not saying that's gonna happen. A lot of the advocating takes place in our caucus, um, and that's what's in the debate.
I think it's fair for cities, but, uh, even backfill county?
Yes.
I guess along those lines is that, uh, we've seen the, uh, multi-residential rate. It used to be a hundred percent, and now it's being lowered, and at some point it'll be the same as residential. So we're shifting the tax burden to, uh, more residential properties, and certainly impacts, um, this county because of you and I and the number of apartments that exists there. And if you look around our communities, apartments are being built all over the place. Mr. Grant, do you have any comments on this one?
Yes, uh, thank you very much, and thank you all for coming today. I might think, um, I just wanted to sort of dovetail on what's, uh, some comments that Representative Cressig made, and that should, I, I, we under, we understand and we hear that, you know, this, that these will be on the, that everything is on the table. And if that's the case, one of the things we'll be looking to link as part, as the urban county coalition, are what, what you guys have all heard me say up at the Capitol are the unfunded and underfunded mandates, like the housing of state offices. So if, if there is a scaling back of the backfill, we're gonna ask that the state take back its responsibilities for funding state offices, um, and not, not have the counties, um, sort of bear the burden of fun, of paying for about sixty percent of the DHS offices in the larger counties. And, uh, we're also gonna be asking for some solutions, uh, for you, and we have some ideas, but solutions to help us with the expanding needs of, of courthouses and courthouse securities, which are burdens that are entirely borne by the county, even though we're talking about sort of state courts. So we're, if the, if you guys are discussing backfill, um, reductions or rollbacks, we're gonna be looking to link those issues to take some of that burden kind of off of the counties. So, thank you.
Okay. Uh, the next item we have is the mental health funding, and, uh, this goes back to Senate File Five oh four. Mr. White is our representative on the county social services, and, uh, you know, our, our focus on this is that, uh, if there's any more requirements placed on the, um, regional mental health, is that, uh, the state, uh, commit to paying for those. I don't know, Mr. White, do you have any comments on, uh, how successful our region has been and some of the challenges that you're facing?
Well, the, the truth of the matter is that it's probably one of the best things we've done is, uh, group together and form this, form the twenty-two county coalition we have. It's been saving the taxpayers a bunch of money, and yet, first thing we hear every, every time we do something to improve the situation, like talking about Medicaid, Medicare, and even taking care of our people, the first thing it said, look out, you know, if we expand, we like, we, we wanna expand the programs as much as we can. And where we ought to be expanding right now, as I see it, is at the, at kids' level, doing things for kids, because if we could catch them, that, catch the problem there, we won't have to catch it on the other end. And we're spending a lot of money, throwing money out the window on a lot of this, these different things, not, and we're, we're being fiscally responsible with the, with the twenty-two county coalition. coalition. We've got a lot of great programs in place. The city's been working on a stepping up program and stuff that'll help with different issues. Frank's been involved with, out at the detention center and things, we're looking at with that. It's, it's everybody working together to save taxpayers' money. And I see it as, if we work together, we can accomplish a lot more. So that's my two cents. And having said that, I do invite the ones that haven't been out to Country View, shame on every one of you that hasn't been out to Country View, that's, them people deserve a voice. They do not have a voice, and the only voice they got right now is us, us five up here. And sometimes we don't even have five of us, our voices. But I was out there yesterday, and it's interesting, these people, Columbus High School kids were out there, the volleyball team, the state champions was out there. Some of the things these people appreciate, we take for granted. I mean, they were winning little trinkets, playing bingo, and they were happy at slarks. And I'm sitting there saying, looking at these people, and I went over and talked to Joe. Joe was one of the kids that's out, I thought he was a kid. Well, he is compared to me. And I said, Joe, what are you, about 20? And he said, no, I'm 37. And he's been out there a long time, and he was just walking in circles, and he sat down, he was talking with me, and I had a good conversation with him. These people deserve a voice. I've got two good friends out there that I consider good friends, David and Richie. They've been out there ever since they were little children. And Richie's still at a point in his life where he's getting older, so he's got to have somebody help him walk around. And I think we deserve, we owe it to those people to help them walk around the last part of their life. And at least treat these people with dignity. And we'll be waiting to see the rest of you out at Country View for a tour.
Thank you. Does anyone have any response to the Senate File 40, 504?
Yeah, first of all, thank you for your comments. I really agree, and we respect it, and focusing on kids and what we've got to do. I've been to Country View a long time, I've been there a while, so up and out there.
They've gotten a lot older.
Yeah. I work with some, I've been with a lot of their teams in the same thing, so their stories are heartfelt, and I agree with you. Senate File 504 does call for an inter, intercommittee. I don't think that's been put together yet. If it hasn't, it should be, so hopefully we'll be going on that. But yes, I agree, we need to be looking at all kinds of new and different ideas of mental health funding. All of us, I think, are pretty proud of the system we have here in Blackhawk County and what we've done with the regional system. It's kind of the model for the state, and so we thank everyone involved in that and the process that we want you to do to that point. So, but in this issue, we all know that the need is, is great, the need is far greater than probably we're able to even put forth as far as a culture to combat. So it's something we have to be on top of all the time. I know those are just words, but we all agree that's an immediate response, that it's something we have to keep going.
Mr. Kressig?
Yeah, I, you know, I actually was involved with that passage of the 22-county coalition. And in concept, I think it has worked well. I think one of the big struggles is your large urban areas that have smaller rural areas in the coalition is, you know, mental health needs are all across the state, but if you come to a larger area, you're going to have higher numbers, and the needs are greater within those areas. I, I do see an area that I think, and I'd like to get your feedback too, but the amount of carryover dollars that the county coalition, the 22-county coalition carries forward each year, that's, I've actually worked with the Cedar Valley Native Way on this issue for a couple of years now, and that was one area that, I know Blackhawk County is, is a leader in a program to get people to beds, particularly to help them instead of going to the jail system. But, you know, we just need access, and it's critical, care access. And, you know, with the closure of the two mental health facilities, the reduction of access to independence, right now, as my understanding, it's about 40 people that are housed within that place. And there are a few children, but they were told not to accept any additional children. So, you know, if you're a child in Iowa with mental health issues, there's really a word to go, you're going to have to go out of state to get that. And that, that's really problematic. So two areas that I think are critical is, again, critical care access. You know, if you go, just go talk to the people in the hospitals, emergency rooms. They have people staying in the emergency rooms for like six, seven days, with a full-time nurse with them. I mean, that's just wrong, because there's no beds, no access. Actually, we're the worst state in the country, the worst, when it comes to making sure that people with mental health issues get access to a bed. And I, you know, and then the other one I heard was early intervention. I don't know if you're familiar with the ACE study. It's Adverse Childhood Experiences. They have been able to do this study and have, have a person go through that, fill it out, and after they're done, they can see some of the things that have impacted them, whether it's parental divorce, abuse, prison, you know, all those things. And so I think our K-12 systems, we need to make sure that we do that early intervention so we can identify it and, and get the resources. And I just, I'll just leave it with this, and I know you all know it, but the largest provider of mental health services in Iowa is our prison system. I mean, that is wrong. It's wrong. We're locking people up. The, the issue of the family, the Becker family in Parkersburg, I talked to the mother. She said she begged and pleaded to try and find a, a place for their son, they couldn't get one. Well, guess what happened? He murdered someone. And now he's in the jail system. I talked to her the other day. He's doing all right. You know, I, I think it's just tragic, you know? It's a disease, folks.
That's where you get the best care.
Yeah. It's a disease, and we should start treating it as such, and making sure people get access. So I'm all in, I'd love to circle on the interim, but it just seems like, that's the question, why are we waiting? Why haven't we informed that committee? It's just, to me, I think it's ridiculous. Thank you.
I know we, we need to move this along. We have a lot of, of other items on the agenda, but reference to the carryover funds that county social services have and the other 14 regions in the state, they're being asked to drop their funding balance down to 20%. You know, if the county, if we did that, our bonding rate would go down to, we keep it at 25% to 27%, and that's what our bonding rating is based on. And if we dropped down to 20%, we would have to pay a lot more money to borrow money. So.
So you're not, you're opposed to looking at that carry, okay. I appreciate your.
Well, we're not opposed to looking at carryover. We're opposed to putting it to 20%, which it is now at.
Yeah.
Should be at 25.
25, okay, great.
Three months, three months, that figures out to three months.
And, and the misgiving of that is to clump everybody in the state together and show this big carryover fund. You base it on individual regions, it's not that much money.
Having to spend it down quickly makes it hard for, for the regions to, to plan and make true investments in adding services, because we can't accumulate these funds, so.
In reality, though, if you look at the services, there, there's, there's a struggle that exists, and so we're just trying to find resources.
Well, it's, it's unfortunate that, you know, as legislators, we look at something like this on the state, on the county level, but yet, one of the reasons that we keep our balance so high in our rainy day accounts is because of our bond rating and how, because we have one of the best bond ratings in the country, and we realize that. So it's unfortunate the legislature would, you know, kind of stick their nose into this, really, when, when they're not living up to their commitments on, on, on mandatory things that we require the counties to do. And, you know, I've heard that our budgets are bad, but they're really self-inflicted wounds. We have given away revenue to the tunes of hundreds of millions of dollars, and it's questionable whether, whether we benefited from it. A recent study went and showed that our commercial property tax effort that was more than 300 million resulted in Iowa having one of the lowest growth rates in the nation. So it's not working, and unfortunately, when we say everything's on the table again, I, you, you look at why it's on the table, it was because, in, in the Senate at least, the majority leader believes that we ought to go back in and adjust corporate income tax rates, because they firmly believe that if we have the lowest income tax rates in the country, new companies will come to Iowa. But unfortunately, that's not the case. They didn't happen when we gave the largest tax cut in the history of Iowa, and got nothing for it, because the workers aren't here. So our effort needs to really focus on that. And I think it'd be a big mistake to Iowa taxpayers to further go down that path and not live up to the mandates that we require counties to, to do.
Thank you. Representative Solomon?
I have nothing to add.
All right, thank you. The next item is our water quality. Blackhawk County is part of three watershed organizations. We have the Upper Cedar, the Middle Cedar, and the Upper Wopsee that we're members of. And those entities are, are working to improve water quality and to control funding, our flooding. I don't know why funding would come into this, but there is inadequate funding to address water quality issues in the state of Iowa, and it's one of our, certainly one of the issues that, you know, as elected officials, we need to be concerned about the quality of, of, quality of our water, and also the ability to reduce flooding. You know, if you look across what Cedar River, the amount of money that's been, needed to be placed to put into recoveries from floods, up and down the Cedar River and also on the Wopsee, that is, it is far outreaches the monies that we're spending to be proactive. And when we come back to all these issues, if we'd put money in a proactive manner, rather than a reactive manner, we would start saving money, and perhaps all of our budgets would be easier to deal with. On the water quality, anyone have questions? I know that there was legislation passed of the, the water land legacy to establish a fund, but that's never been, those funds have never been taxed. So any comments from anyone?
I would say that for us as a state, from the numbers that I just read, in order for us to address water quality, it'd be about $800 million to a billion dollars a year that we would have to put in place to prevent the nitrates and phosphates from entering our, our water system. You know, and I'll just tell you, the county conservations really get how to address this issue. Cover crops are one of them, they've done some things with farms, I went on a tour with the soybean association, and we were up at Washburn, and saw some of the really positive things that they're doing. You know, don't, don't remove water that's in place naturally, those are there because of, of, of those things. And, you know, I think, you know, last year, there was a bill in the legislature that was in the House that would take some of the revenues, the taxes that are collected by the use of water, we all pay taxes on it, and start this, this fund. And I supported it. I mean, it's really short, it's probably going to be like 50 million as it grows, but I do, I do sense it is a start. And, you know, we've got a long ways to go. I do get a sense too, though, that farmers are really looking to get engaged in this, but of course, the cost and those things are one of the barriers that are holding them back. But, you know, I think there may be an opportunity to get something done this year. I know this is probably going to be a term we haven't heard much, but in a bipartisan way, you know? I don't know if we've said much of that in the last, after the last session, but.
I think everyone expects that.
I agree. No, I'm with you. So hopefully we can do that and, and get something done. I know Farm Bureau has a different approach to this, that was in the Senate, and it didn't, both sides had different contrasting proposals, and of course, they're going to sit down and try and work out the differences, but we've got to start somewhere.
Anyone else wish to address water quality?
Yeah, I think that's something that there's a lot of interest in taking up. I know I'm interested in it, I know that others are interested in it, and, you know, I think there's, I think at the end of session, last session, it was difficult to judge the effects of the both bills, and so people were ready to be done, and it was tabled. But I think this next session, I've heard you talk about being interested in getting that done, and I think we'll be.
I've also heard that in our meeting with the Senate leadership, those that are working on the water quality issue, said that there's supposed to be a bill coming out of the House, maybe they might not be aware of it, but to utilize the infrastructure fund dollars. And it's always, I think most legislators would agree about, we absolutely have to do something, it's how you fund it, given the, the complexity and the amount of money that's required. But if we use sound agricultural farming practices, a lot of that nitrate issue could, could slowly go away. So I participated in, is with, with Representative Kressig, in several meetings that we have, watershed meetings, talking about that, and there have been farmers that have come up and said that they have switched their farming practices, not because they feel like they're tree huggers, because it was economically sound for them to do that. And I think part of it's got to be education also. So it's something we've got to continue to work on. Having the most impaired waters in the nation is something that we should all hang our heads and shame on, and it's something that needs to be worked together in a bipartisan way, for sure.
I think just comments on the nitrates, I think the, the floods of 2016, the amount of nitrates that ended up in the delta was, 40% of it came from the state of Iowa. Senator Rogers?
I agree with everything my colleagues just said. Bipartisan. I would just add, last year, in the final days of the legislature, funding for the Iowa Flood Center was almost eliminated. I serve on the Middle Cedar River Watershed Management Authority, which is, was lucky enough to secure a very large HUD grant worth tens of millions of dollars. But part of the reason why we got that grant was because we had a resource like the Iowa Flood Center. So we almost lost nearly $100 million of federal investment in the state because we were going to cut a couple million dollars by taking away funding for the Iowa Flood Center. So I just ask, you know, as we look at the whole picture this year, and look at how those types of decisions can really jeopardize great opportunities that we have coming into the state.
Thank you. Next item we have is the Iowa Public Employees Retirement System. It's one of the most solvent, well-funded public retirement systems in the United States. It has been maintained, and it's very conservative in its investments, and there's some rumors that there may be taking a look at the IPRs retirement system by this upcoming legislature and want to get some feedback on that.
I'll give you feedback when I touch it. Just rumors, we're not touching it. And I'm not a big fan of rumors that have been spread because of this, but we're not touching it.
Okay.
I would share that, I've had constituents talk about this issue. They have a fear, their fear of, of this being changed from a defined benefit to something like a 401K fund. And so, you know, we'll have to see. I do know that- I do know the process, okay? Here's the process down there. An IFRS bill could be put into the Ways and Means Committee. The Ways and Means Committee is final proof. Their bills go right to the end. And so, I appreciate hearing Representative Rogers' comments that they're not going to do anything with it, but time will tell. And I think what needs to happen is that whether it's a rumor or is what was implied, it really is something that people are concerned with, especially with what occurred with Chapter 20. That was originally supposed to be a tweak to Chapter 20. Well, that wasn't a tweak, that just ripped the whole Chapter 20 system out. So, hopefully, that's where they're at, they don't mess with it. But I think it's actually funded very well. It's what, 56% of funding? So, I mean, it could be 100 and I'm sure they're working on that, but let's hope that's the case.
Representative Rogers, I'm glad that, you know, that's what he's hearing in the house, but quite frankly, it isn't a rumor in the Iowa senate. I personally heard senators talk about how we need to reform and look at new ways of funding, you know, retirement systems. So, maybe it's not coming up immediately in the house, but there are people that truly believe that we need to change the system, which I agree with Representative Kresik. I would oppose that. I think it's a secure program and it is really used as a recruitment tool. Iowa public employees don't necessarily compare favorably with the private sector and a lot of job positions and that secure retirement system is a big part of why they choose, talented people choose, to work for the state of Iowa.
I would just agree with all of that and just, you know, with all due respect to my colleagues, we have no intention, we all agree it's a good program. The only, maybe there's people thinking about it down the road someday, 81% funded and that's pretty good compared to systems around the country. I would never vote for anything that does not actually make IFRS better. And that's the mentality from everybody I talk to in the house. I can, I don't like to guarantee anything in politics, but we aren't touching it this year.
It's good to hear. Representative Solomon?
The interest seems to be other places.
Okay. Any of our staff have any comments on this?
Yeah, the under, HR Director.
If you want to come up to the mic.
Good morning, Debbie Bunker, HR Director for Blackhawk County. I'm very pleased to hear your comments about IFRS and I would agree with Senator Dossler, it is a recruitment tool. I have heard from employees over the last several months and they are quite concerned about their IFRS and along with Chapter 20, you know, particularly where, Chapter 22, where if you're demoted or terminated now, that becomes public record, that's a big concern and it makes it hard to draw help when, you know, when you have that kind of a possibility facing you where you don't have that anyplace else. And that's something I would like to ask the legislators to review is possibly changing that. I don't think that's fair to our public servants.
Thank you.
I just want to add just briefly, the changes that have may have been made in our retirement system, IFRS in the past was done in a bipartisan way. We sat down and worked on that, we actually did improve the system, had employees put a little more of their skin in the game and I think it helped in the long run. So, I hope we continue down that path, any changes do occur, it's definitely done in a bipartisan way.
I agree.
Thank you. There's been concerns about the opioid epidemic and I guess the Urban County Coalition encourages the General Assembly to seek measures to mitigate and curb the abuse of opioids and other injected drugs. I'm wanting to know if there's any action being considered to address this, to make Iowa Prescription Management Program a key part of the strategy.
I know they had an interim committee this year that discussed the, and I think for a lot of legislators, they really got an eye opening. They had an individual that works for us at the Department of Public Health who came forward with significant reluctance to talk about her husband and how he died. And so, I think there's a strong awareness. I do know one of the areas that we did get, of course, it's not at the level that it should be, was the medical cannabis passage. You know, people with, you know, typically are dealing with pain, go to the opioids to deal with that pain. Well, medical cannabis is actually something that people with, they call it tractable pain, they can get access to that and, you know, the harmful aspects of it are minimal and they're able to deal with discomfort and pain without getting addicted to the opioids. And, you know, I just saw on TV of a young woman who had a bright career, she had an accident and was dealing with pain and got addicted to opioids, the next thing she's on, she loses her job, she's on the streets. And it was sad to see that and it's occurring here. And I know from a public safety aspect, it's something that we really need to pay attention to and I serve on public safety, so I think hopefully, we can begin to move forward with this.
And I guess along with this is certainly a funding priority and it goes back to being proactive rather than reactive, but we encourage the legislature to restore the drug courts. You know, we're part of the first judicial district and those fundings for drug courts have been going away and some of those have been picked up by county, but I don't know how long we can continue to fund those.
Chairman Magnuson, I'd agree 100% with you. We've had the opportunity to pass to actually sit in the Blackhawk County Drug Courts and saw how effective that is. And, you know, this is a perfect case and we see it in a lot of different issues in the legislature of being penny wise and pound foolish because when you look at the cost of turning somebody's life around and they're pretty aggressive courts and making sure that individuals work, there's family courts that deal with family issues and then also on the mental health side of things, when you look at the cost in prison to deal with mental health individuals at 40 to 50 some thousand dollars a year per individual, we need to start putting money on the front end to save Iowa taxpayers because those kind of programs do work and they are a benefit in the long run. So, it's something that when you talk about everything's on the table, well, let's think long range and let's really look at ways that we can save Iowa taxpayers, you know, in the future.
Real quickly on that subject, I go up there quite a bit and a gentleman a while back that was graduating at the stage, he, I walked out with him and I said congratulations to him, welcome back to being a taxpayer. And as we walked outside, he walked over to his car and I stood with him by his car, he had an old jalopy, but he had, he shared with me, I forget how long it'd been since he'd been without using drugs or alcohol or whatever his problem was, like 35 out of his 50 years of life, he'd been having problems. And he got his family back, he got a job and he had a car and he was paying insurance and he was a taxpayer again. So, it's like Bill said, we're turning lives around and we don't remember that or we forget about those people too many times.
Anyone else have comment on that?
I think there's going to be some legislation come forward on the situation and I think among that's going to be strengthening the prescription monitoring program.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to.
Is that going to go along VA lines too?
I'm not sure.
I think it should, probably should.
I just wanted to quickly thank Representative Kresik for his leadership on medical cannabis and for making the link here between the opioid crisis and the need to expand access to medical cannabis for, which can be a very strong viable alternative for people's pain mitigation without the consequences that opioids have.
Okay, thank you. Move on to, we have some additional items, one of them's the tax credits. You know, certainly the hope that you look at those carefully, you know, the renewable energy, the endowment Iowa tax credits, the historical tax credits, you know, are critical to our communities to encourage economic development and tourism. Anyone has any comments on that?
I'll just say again, like Representative Sanders said, that everything's on the table. And in fact, I'm maybe the only one that actually has voted for a bill, a tax credit kind of overall redesign bill last year and the corporations committee had never went anywhere after that, but it was built that was led by Representative Grassley. He was well aware of the tax credits that we have throughout the whole state and trying to do something different. So, interestingly enough, that was, that bill was passed in a partisan way, all Republicans voted for it and all Democrats voted against it, which I think is, that was probably just politics in the end of the year. So, but it's on the table, it's something that our corporations chair is well aware of and trying to do something about.
I'd just like to say that that bill itself was overly broad and it did eliminate like historic tax credits, a lot of the credits that we use for economic development tools. Without the historic tax credit program, downtown Waterloo would not be the same. And a great number of those buildings are utilized in that program. While on the Ways and Means Committee in the Iowa senate, we did institute a program to review a percentage of all tax credits every interim and I participated in those until just recently. And I have to say this, that our recommendations to the legislature, we could not move some of those tax credits, that we didn't think we're getting a return for our investment. There's a tax credit that gives one cent per gallon to promote ethanol in the state of Iowa. I mean, that's several million dollars. If we're putting everything on the table, we can look at some of the individual tax credits and see value in them or not. We have an innovation fund where investors invest 80% and they get a 20% or 100, their 100% investment, they get 80% of their own responsibility and 20% the state picks up. Innovation funds are important and we rank the lowest in the Midwest on startups and new technology businesses, the businesses of the future. There's a great value in that where other tax credits don't. So, we need to look at them individually and not a broad base and wipe them all out and in turn actually hurt our community. So, I think these tax credit proposals and the bill that came out that they did have a vote on in the Iowa House was a major mistake because it was too broad based and it didn't include a detailed look at the individual credits.
Thank you. The tax increment financing, we know it's an important tool to promote economic development. One of the things we, you know, if you're interested in considering that, you know, some of the requirements are not requirements, but a city can decide to TIF an area without the approval of the county or school systems and I guess, you know, should cities commit our property taxes that the county collects or the school system collects in that process. So, if you're going to look at that, give some consideration as to what the role of counties and school systems are in providing those TIFs.
I would agree, it's something that we need to look at. It's interesting that we have this, you know, tax credit and tax financing discussion right after each other here, that's a state level discussion, it's a county and state level discussion, kind of this thing. All of us are looking for ways to, you know, promote economic growth in our areas. So, and I think it's, you know, interesting, a lot of people don't understand that the state backfills $60 million every year of education TIF. That's something that people don't realize, but it's a big deal. And so, all of those things have to come into play when we discuss these types of things that are promoting that economic growth, which all of us in our own bailiwick's understand that it's part of the process of doing government.
County does not get backfilled.
I just want to talk a little bit about TIF. I think for the most part, it's a great economic development tool that can be utilized to promote growth in communities. I know Cedar Falls uses it extensively. It pays up on, way of bonding and paying up on the front end, things to help with sewer and the kind of infrastructure you need to promote economic growth in the community and then those bonds are paid back through the TIF process. But there were problems with it and there are problems and I think that, I actually chaired the bill that came across from the house that was overly restrictive and we looked at increasing accountability and having a better understanding of reporting when we ran that bill. And it made it easier for communities to file and we have better data now on that. So, I guess I would be more unwilling to take a look at the county's concerns about it in the future because certainly, as things change, we need to make adjustments, especially when you take a look at, you know, the amount of money that is tied up in educational funding and also funding for police and fire that is being served in these TIF districts and those districts technically aren't paying for that stuff. So, there's definitely a conversation to be had about it and I think that's one of those things where we really got to work in a bipartisan way and an inner community and county way also to make sure that we don't mess up a tool that is extremely valuable for economic growth.
Thank you. Next item is something that Blackhawk County is certainly concerned about. In the state of Iowa, there are two counties that operate county homes, nursing facilities, mental health, Dubuque County and Blackhawk County. The MCOs are paying at a lower negotiated rate. The state sets the, based on costs, the rate and the MCOs are not paying, they're paying approximately 80% of the cost to provide those services. For Blackhawk County, that can amount to $2 to $3 million a year of taxpayer money to provide the difference between what the MCOs are paying. We have an example and we have the represent, Mr. Coleman here that can tell you about an issue that we're dealing with right now. One of the MCOs is for the persistent mentally ill are going to, they're going to reimburse us for 147 million, or 147,000. And actually, our cost that we submitted is 5.3, or 553,000 dollars and they're saying they're not going to do anything about it except pay the lower rate. Mr. Coleman, would you address that?
Dennis Coleman, Administrator at Country View. It's a billing error and we've been fighting this for over a year. We have three licensures out there. We have a regular nursing facility licensure. We have a PMI licensure, is persistent mental illness, and then we have an ICFID unit. We have three NPI numbers, that's the National Provider Identification Number. And we have gave this MCO all the proper numbers, but they are either reluctant or have failed to get the number into the system. So, we're supposed to receive on our PMI people approximately $300 per day to care for these folks, while they're paying us at a rate of 160. for these folks, while they're paying us at a rate of $168.45. And they've got all the information, they're in arrears to us $548,000, and they're wanting to settle for $142,000, which we're unwilling to accept. But we get so far within the organization, the MCO, and they just kind of stonewall us. So, we're probably going to have to get legal involvement in this to move this forward. So, we finally got some movement with them, and they were paying us too much then. So, and there will be a takeback on it, but this experiment with the MCOs has been not good. So, it's, I spoke of the facility in Dubuque. They are not going to have any MCO in the immediate Dubuque area. I was visiting with the administrator over there. So, that's something that personally I'd like to see our lawmakers look at, and I think there's got to be a better system than what we currently have.
Two questions I ask you.
Yes, sure.
You said they, they're actually negotiating paying more than they're required?
As I mentioned.
Is that in this specific instance or broadly?
Broadly. This is Genevieve Schaefer, she's the Assistant Administrator out there. What they were doing, they said that this MCO has two sides. They have the healthcare side, and then they have the behavioral side. So, they said, well, it didn't have a behavioral contract. So, we got that in place, and now they're paying at our ICFID rate, which is too much. So, it's, and we have a third-party company that does our billing, double, triple-checked all that, everything is being submitted at the correct rate on our end. We believe they're pulling these claims and entering them manually rather than electronically, so it increases the chances for errors.
So, what's going to happen? Now, it's back now?
They will recoup those funds.
They will recoup those funds.
But, Genevieve Schaefer, Assistant Administrator at Country View, the ongoing billing difficulties that we are experiencing with the MCOs really create a significant cash flow issues. And those are, you know, not only complicating our daily business activities, but, you know, it also leads to issues and big decisions that our supervisors have to make. And without those timely payments, you know, we cannot operate our business as effectively and efficiently as it should be. These are issues that are seemingly, from our perspective, stuff that should be able to be corrected quickly and accurately, but we have been going, working through this issue for almost a year, and we have not seen any measurable progress. And as a provider, to be asked to take a settlement of $147,000 when our billings were above $500,000, I mean, that is just unacceptable. You know, we care for some very complex individuals out there with complex mental health and social medical needs.
And to add to it, they sent us a spreadsheet of the people, supposedly we were the PMIs. There was only two of them that were actually PMI, all the other residents on their spreadsheet were not people that were PMI, that are confusion. It's, and they're just, you get so far, and you hit the wall.
I'd just, if I could just comment on this. You know, since this was done by Governor Branstad, without any of our, we never had a vote, we never got to put our input into it, it was, I thought, probably the single biggest abuse of power that ever took place in the state Capitol since I've been there. And now, here's what we're faced with, is nothing but a mess. It's a mess. I mean, I'm sure any one of us in here there is serving a state, get people to contact us and have the same issues. You know, what we did was, we took a system that was probably pretty well managed, and I know there's cost to it, and then we gave it to a private company to run it. Okay? So, that company's focus has been profits. And so, what we're seeing is people that are really, really struggling with the issue. And I would share this too, and I heard this, with Senator Dotser and I were there at EGM, and they had a discussion with many of the people that provide medical services, particularly like devices, that the frustration and struggles that they have seen. What I did hear was a colleague from the Senate, a Republican, who expressed the same frustrations. So, not only are you frustrated, I'm frustrated, and so are other legislators. I don't get a sense that the current Governor Vennels is interested in making any significant changes to it, but if you look at 18% of the Medicaid population, 18% consume about 80% of funding, and those are the people that you're taking care of and other.
Agencies.
Groups. I mean, I've had businesses come to me and say, you know, we had to take out loans to continue, I met with a gentleman from up in Parkersburg, that the struggles that they're facing, and he deals with mental health services. So, it's a mess. I just had some positive feelings that I heard from colleagues on the other side of the aisle that have the same frustration.
Someone, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I just, which company are you dealing with completely with this, or?
We're dealing with two now. Mayor Health Care, they dropped out the first of December, so there's two companies, but our concern is with one.
Okay. Have you had any legislature here mean for you or talk about?
Well, we've contacted the IME as a representative. They have been contacted.
Senator, I guess, send me maybe the really interesting one, and he's got two, and you will interview him on your behalf, that's right.
Yes, that would be very helpful.
Just a summary of what's happening?
What's happened? What you're faced with?
Certainly do that.
Yeah, that would be good.
Because it's frustrating.
I have one other concern, may I bring it up with the board's permission?
Okay.
Every two, sorry. Every two years, we have a rebase, it's based on our cost reports, and we, this is a year that we're supposed to receive it. It will be retroed to us from July 1 of 2017 to the point where the Department of Human Services releases that money. But at this point, we have not received that. So, it's going on six months, and.
Maybe you can provide them that information also.
Yep, certainly will.
I guess a comment on this, you know, we're getting reimbursed at about 80%, and those additional costs are made up from Blackhawk County property taxpayers. So, in effect, the state is only paying, or through the MCOs is only paying 80%. Blackhawk County taxpayers are subsidizing the rest of the state.
Frank, I'd agree with your comments, and it's unfortunate that this happened. Legislators are in a difficult spot, even though majority members, majority party members are talking about trying to do something. The fact remains that any legislation that we pass has to be signed by the governor. And our current governor is, has been making statements about how they think that this is just startup issues and that they're deeply care about the health and well-being of Iowans, which sounds pretty good, and that they're looking for positive outcomes. But unfortunately, this isn't just an aberration here in Blackhawk County. And we're seeing, I think Representative Rogers might be able to get something done, because usually, when legislators talk directly to the MCOs, they're quick handling an issue because they, they don't want the legislature to feel like that they're not responsive. But I sat on those committees and interviewed with the MCOs and asked them direct questions. And one of the two things, either they were totally ignorant about what was going on in reality around the state, or two, they're paid to keep the company in line exactly, you know, for marketing purposes. This thing is pervasive. We've lost already one MCO, and the state of Iowa is actually picking up more than 10,000 individuals under the old pay-for-service system that was ran more efficiently. I mean, we had about a 7% cost, administrative cost on the state level. We allowed the MCOs to have over 14, and we gave them $600 million in administrative money above what we were giving to the state for them to run this program, and they have failed miserably. And they are driving out providers across the state of Iowa for the very reasons that Representative Kresik has talked about. They're not paying them up, they're shortchanging them, they are denying. We've had providers that say, we sent in our paperwork, they sent it back, said they didn't cross enough Is and Ts, they redid it, sent it back in, no response, did not claim that they never got it. So, they resubmitted it with certified mail, nothing ever happened, and the MCO claimed they never received it even though they signed off on it. Those kind of problems are across the state. They are upside down, and they're looking to take it out on the individual providers, which in turn hurts Iowans and their families. This is very serious. It started out, and one of the Republican senator that spoke said that at first, we didn't believe it, we thought it was startup costs, and now we know it's systemic to the system, and something's got to be done. And I'm hoping we can work in a bipartisan way to get this thing straightened out. But it is a very difficult problem.
If you're looking at that perhaps, or Country View could be in that category that's under the state-run operation. Maybe you could look at that.
Yeah, my sense, we'll go ahead.
Yeah, definitely something to look at. I just, one last comment about this whole thing. I know that the change from the old Medicaid system to an MCO was done with good intentions. And it goes back to my first comments of this whole meeting today, was Medicaid was bulging at the seams, pushing every budget across the board at every level of government. And so, the reality was, going to the new system saved $111 million over two years now, for our whole overall budget. Now, the reality is, there are some problems with implementation, and we've got, and we have to address those. I'm not denying any issues that Senator Dotser just said as far as problems pertaining to the system.
Right, and I could just add too, and one of the things that I suggest, is that, you know, I mentioned that 18%, and it could be a number that could fluctuate, but there's a percentage of the population that has endured this MCO privatization that should be carved out of it, should be put back into the public system so that they can get access to care and providers are assured that they're, and, you know, then the rest, maybe this MCO system will work, but right now, it's just a complete barrier.
But when you're looking at carving that out, keep in mind Country View.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we are providing service to those with multiple situations, mental health, so they all have complex issues. I appreciate the comments on all this. We had talked about the unfunded mandates, and, you know, we're looking at the courthouse, you know, we provide 50% of this building, it provides the state offices. We receive no reimbursement for those. The Department of Human Services, we have a large portion of our Pinecrest facility. We receive about 30-some percent reimbursement for the rent on that facility, on those offices out there. But then, as county government, and keep in mind that these are regional services out there, but the taxpayers of Blackhawk County, we have to pay for their postage, we have to pay for office equipment for them. So, it is a significant part of our budget. We also had to provide for juvenile court service buildings, we had to provide for keeping all the paper, and earlier we talked about the benefit of going electronically. Well, if you look at our facilities, they're stacked full of state records. If there could be a movement in getting those stored electronically, we could significantly reduce the amount of storage that counties, and particularly Blackhawk County, has to provide to state offices. So, it is a significant cost, in with that, we're responsible for the security within the courthouse here. Primarily, that security is here because of the courthouse. So, that's an expense. There are fees that are charged for court services, but none of those are marked out for county costs to be covered under those. So, if you could look at that, when you're, when you're looking at all these avenues that perhaps there's an undue burden put on counties to provide these unfunded mandates. Certainly, when it comes to publishing costs, here in Blackhawk County, we're required to publicize our, put in three newspapers, you know, or we could be putting this online or even reducing down to one newspaper, and also being able to reduce the volume that we have to put in the newspapers. So, these are our costs that the state says we're going to pay. Wish you would look at those. While you're looking at all that. And I'm paraphrasing here, so that as you look through your sheet, you'll see what we have.
I had a question about the county courtroom services that you provide. What, you know, with the recent passage of the concealed carry permits to, well, now this year in the session, right now at the Capitol, you can go in with a concealed weapon. And I know that the language in the bill allows for a lawsuit to be filed against, like a county or a city that denied, have you had any lawsuits come forward with regard to?
I think that, I think the, there was a ruling by one of the state judges that counties didn't have to comply with that. So, we do not allow, we do not allow weapons in the courthouse.
Okay.
So, nothing's changed from your perspective?
No, not on that aspect, no.
Because I know, so the original language would have allowed somebody to file a lawsuit. Now, did that line?
There was a ruling, there was a ruling came down.
Did that lawsuit also impact cities then too, to prevent people from?
I don't know, I don't know.
City hall needs and that?
I don't know. I can't answer that.
Just county, is that, is that what you're?
Courthouse is what we're specifically, why we have it here is because it's a courthouse and the type of situations that occur within this facility.
Thank you.
I would like to, and going over some of these, but I'd hope that you would look at all of them when, that we've sent to you and work on those. One of the areas is the REAP funding, and it's particularly important to counties. We've asked to restore that to $20 million, and we have our Conservation Director here, Mike Henderson, if he would address some of these issues in it. Maybe you could tie in the trails funding along with that.
I'm Mike Kendrickson, the Director with Blackhawk County Conservation Board. And I know you see this every year, and I think everyone in this room understands how important REAP is and the efforts that are always made to make sure that we are eligible. And. And everyone knows how important those funds are, from land acquisition to just about anything that we do. Those REAP sources are, resources are so valuable to us. Things like the Hartman Reserve Nature Center and different things like that, that hopefully we'll be opening here in the next month and a half. Those things just aren't possible without the REAP funding. We talked about our trail systems and things like that. Those are, those are one of the big issues that the county conservation board is facing and has been facing for quite some time. And I know, Bill, you're very, very familiar with it, and Mr. Kresik, you are too. And, you know, those funds also are a source for us to leverage much, much more money through grants and things like that. One of the things that we face, and let's just use the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. I mean, we have, we have predictions of $8 to $10 million to cover all the bridge repairs or replacements that need to be taken care of on that trail system. And when we start to look at that kind of money, obviously, the only thing that we have to look at are grants and different things like that. State rec trail grants, federal rec trail grants, we all know the situation that those are in. They've been cut, still there, thank goodness, but they've been cut. And they're always a source that we will continue to chase. But once again, the importance of REAP to us as much as anything else is just simply the ability to leverage more funds. And so it's just very, very important, you know, along those ways.
I'd like to respond to that. I thank Mike for his work, and I know what a difficult task he has to handle a lot of these recreational issues. And it's unfortunate that most of the legislature kind of looks at these type of things as warm and fuzzy, nice for our, for our state and our communities. But the reality of it is, they are key to economic development. If you look at the situation we're in, in the state of Iowa, with the amount of retirees, the new job creation, the reports that were, that came out of Governor Branstad's Georgetown research that said that by 2025, we needed to have over 400,000 new workers to replace and fill in with the new jobs creation. And you look at our growth over the last 20-some years in the state of Iowa, only 200,000 in total growth of population. So even if we educate every single Iowa and every young person to their maximum potential, and we get them to stay here in Iowa, and trails and recreation, arts and culture are a big part of that, we still won't meet our needs. So one of the reports that are coming out of the task force, Future Ready Iowa, Governor Reynolds chaired that, and also the Economic Development Authority Director Debbie Durham hired Technomics, it used to be the Patel Group, to take a look at economic development. And they're all saying the same thing. We need to recruit people. Our universities and our colleges are key, and the type of communities that attract people to the state of Iowa are very important. Now, if you look at surveys across the business world, here in Iowa and the country, especially in Iowa, they don't mention taxes as an issue. Their number one issue is skilled and qualified workers. Number two is housing, and number three is childcare. So we need to focus on the things that drive our economy, not get sidetracked on things that sound good that don't work. And unfortunately, that's the kind of conversation we're having in the Iowa Senate. The Majority Leader, when questioned about the effects of these commercial income tax cuts and what it meant to another state like Kansas, his response is, well, their, their problem was, they didn't cut their budgets enough. And here we are, talking about the need across the board, from everything, from healthcare, mental health, supporting our communities and our counties across the state of Iowa. And all of it is under severe pressure, even without a talk of further budget cuts. So I think these things are important. They're important to our community, and they're certainly very important to our economic future. We need more Iowans to stay and to recruit to our communities. Our recreational abilities are very important to that endeavor.
I'd just like to talk about the Cedar Valley Nature Trail. It's in Blackhawk County, Buchanan, Lynn County. I think it's really a state trail. It could be with a little expansion include Bremer County, could probably include Johnson County, and we could look at ways of running that all the way to Scott County, if the funding existed. So our Cedar Valley Nature Trail is, you know, is considered Lynn County and Blackhawk County issues because we're the ones that fund it, but it is truly a state trail.
Well, I could just add, I appreciate REAP, I've supported that. It's supposed to be funded at $20 million, I think last session we did it at $12. It's a statewide program, it's pretty well laid out how it's divided up. But one of the areas that I think that we can approach with, and I talked to Bill about this, the nature trail and getting some funding is RIF dollars. And that, those dollars are generated by gaming. And so that's an area I'd ask my colleagues to get involved with that concept because the nature trail is pretty well destroyed just on both sides of Gilbertville. They had a significant washout, and there's a bridge. And, you know, I've ridden a lot of miles on a bike, and I've ridden that many, many times. It is really valuable. Talked to the mayor of the port city, and it's having a negative impact on that community because you have people ride up there and stop and eat and relax and enjoy themselves. So I'm going to try and approach the RIF process and maybe be able to get some state dollars. I don't get a sense that REAP is going to see an increase, hopefully doesn't see a decrease.
You know, on that trail area, we were, had gone through conservation, gone through all the paperwork and was ready to move forward, and then the FEMA reduced or rejected all of those grants and reevaluate them with all disasters that are taking place across the country. So there were significant dollars that we were just on the verge of receiving, and now the FEMA has rejected those till sometime in the future, whatever that means.
One of the, one of the things I can give you a bit of an update on, as far as the FEMA project, we have been hounding them since we found out the funds were not available. They did start to obligate funds again for those 2016 payments. We have been informed that we are going to get obligated, which is great news. The problem that we're dealing with and the reason we haven't come forward with it is the numbers now that they're showing us are not the numbers we worked with a year ago. They're about $60,000 to $70,000 short of what we were working with. So we are working with engineer service to find out where the discrepancy is before we accept that and sign off on that. And so we should have had some really good news by now, but we're working through that. And as soon as we get that figured out, you know, we'll bring that information back to you.
Well, and I appreciate you having me to share with us, because as I said early on, that we would try and approach the RIF funding. And, you know, that may be a potential for us to put some funds in there at state level to help with reconstruction.
I spoke with Senator Elgin, who represents La Porte proper. And we did have a commitment from the chairman of the Infrastructure Committee, Senator Bertrand. And unfortunately, he was removed from that position. So Senator Elgin has been aware, we've invited him to La Porte to take a look at, at the trail stuff, and he's very much aware of it. And hopefully, we can work together to try to get that resolved. He realizes the importance it is to the city of La Porte and the Cedar Valley Nature Trail, which is part of the American Discovery Trail. So it's part of a national trail system, and the Cedar Valley Nature Trail was the original trail in Iowa that was considered one of Iowa's real gems. And unfortunately, and probably fortunately, a lot of the money has gone to the Des Moines area where there is a population, but it's really time for the nature trail to be recognized for its importance and the connection. At one time, we did have the dollars there in the budget. Unfortunately, Governor Branstad vetoed a good chunk of money that we had put in, in the end at the standings committee, using the ending balance dollars to fund improvements along the trail system. And that was before the most recent flood destroyed it. And so the RIF funds where it's going to have to be, ending balance dollars are not, pretty much nonexistent. So it's going to be a continued challenge. And I want to say this about the cycling community and the community that uses the trails. They have started a new fund through the Cedar Trails Partnership to raise public dollars to help match some of these costs. And I know a great number of people are individually contributing over $100 to this fund. So our goal is to raise more than $10,000 through that process to help match some dollars. So the public's, public's working also. So thank you, Mike, for your work.
And I would just, Mike, thank you for what you do. Conservation, protecting natural resources really shouldn't be a partisan issue, it's just corporate dollars becomes a part of it.
Right. Thank you.
Mike has a big task. We have, what, over 8,000 acres in Blackhawk County that is under conservation's responsibility?
Absolutely. Yep. And, you know, what's hard at times is from a moral standpoint, you know, we've listened to a lot of problems today. And our, our work is with recreation, and Mr. Dotzler explained how absolutely important it is to community development, and it absolutely is. But it's hard at times to come and pound your fist on the table when we have these other problems that are laying out there that make you look in not a great light, so to speak. So we do a lot with a little, and we try to get as far as we can get with those dollars, so.
Okay, while we're coming up on about two hours, and I know there's some issues we haven't addressed, but they are on, on the priority sheets. I'd ask Mr. Grant if, if he has anything that he'd like to bring up here that we, you think is important that we haven't covered in legislatures. When you're down there, please keep him occupied 24 hours a day, asking him questions and what the...
He keeps us occupied, actually.
That's what we expect. So Senator Dotzler, Representative Solomon, Representative Kresik, Representative Rogers, we want to thank you very much for taking the time to listen to what are priorities for this upcoming legislature. And I'd just ask you to put Blackhawk County taxpayers first in your decisions. Thank you.
If I could interrupt a minute, Frank? I think Kathy maybe had a few comments on roads, I think that she wanted to bring to your attention as well while we have you here. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. Kathy Nicholas, Blackhawk County Engineer. I just wanted to thank you for your support in the last legislative session for allowing the Iowa Department of Transportation to use, to use state money, state road use tax funds money on off the Iowa primary system. So that will allow cities and counties to trade some of their road use tax funds and swap those out for federal aid dollars. So we will be able to use state dollars on our, the off system, not on the primary system. So thank you for that. We're still working out, the DOT is still working with cities and counties on how that program will be implemented. And we're hoping that projects in 2019 will be using that new, that new system. So thank you for that.
I just got one quick question, and I'm gonna talk to you.
Sure.
On the issue of de-creditation boards, if somebody could tell me what some of the services that were canceled or done.
I could get you a list for that if it would have...
Tom sits on that, on that board, so he certainly can provide that information to you. And our lobbyists can provide any information you want on these items. So thank you. We really appreciate spending time here. We'll finish our agenda. Any reports from, information from board members?
Motion to adjourn.
A motion to adjourn. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned. Thank you.